Mr. Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of December 7th, 2022. I'm Majority Leader Keith Powers. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us here today. If you'd like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on the website.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
President.
Ariola.
Here.
Aviles.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Barron. Thank you. Botcher.
Present.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Here.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias.
Present.
Felice. Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph. Kagan.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Nurse.
Here.
Osay.
Here.
Palladino. Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan.
Present.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Hey, thank you. Shulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Velasquez. Vernikoff. Councilmember Vernikoff.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Juan.
Here.
Thank you. Jaeger.
Here.
Morelli. Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We'll now have today's invocation delivered by Imam Dr. Taher Kakai of Albanian Islamic Cultural Center, located at 307 Victory Boulevard in Staten Island.
Merciful, loving God, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice. We assemble here today in this blessed place as grateful citizens of New York that we are proud to call home, but also as humble people of faith who simply yet sincerely confess as Americans in God we trust. Thus, we do claim you as our Creator, who made us in a perfect image, thus rendering the human person and human life as sacred, endowing us with rights, with rights calling for protection and with freedom, not so much to do whatever we want, but what we ought. We profess you as our common God, a Creator who unites us, a law-giver who has implanted within us a grasp of the truth, a thirst for justice, and I believe that we are at our best when our will is consonant with your own. To these distinguished legislators, we ask the gift of the wisdom only you can bestow, a reclaiming of the honor and nobility of public service, and sensitivity to those in need. Please enlighten in radiant way our leaders, city council members. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Our Lord, remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what is life about, that they are not only leaders, but also here responsible to lead and serve New Yorkers. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone in this city, black, white, Christian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh, LGBTQ, atheist, Hispanic, Asian, we are all your creatures and we are neighbors, we are siblings. Throughout the ages, prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect, at least the least of those amongst us, our children, elderly, and the poor who are hungry, and those who have no homes, those who are ill in body and mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live in the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Gandem and us, the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it's time to speak and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May they and we always are guided by the Spirit of community, by Spirit of justice, and by Spirit of love. God Almighty, you never summon us to do something without supplying us with your grace to do it. That is assurance for all of us. God Almighty, bless this city council, members, and their families. Bless our city, bless our state, and always, God bless the United States of America. In your name we make this prayer. Amen.
Thank you. And I would ask Councilmember Camilla Hanks to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Imam Taher, for joining us at City Hall and delivering such a meaningful invocation at today's stated meeting. Imam Taher is a pillar of the entire Staten Island community, not only as a faith leader, but as a leader in community, public safety, and youth engagement. Since 2003, Imam Taher has been at the helm of the Albanian Islamic Cultural Center in my district, serving as a steward of Staten Island's Muslim community, and giving us all a stronger connection to our borough's Albanian and Balkan communities at large. Imam Taher has always prioritized working closely with Staten Island's elected officials to build bridges between all the different faiths in our community, coordinating an outreach and educational programming, and providing our residents with resources and food, especially during the height of the COVID epidemic, pandemic. As NYPD's Muslim Chaplain, Imam Taher works with the NYPD to connect the Muslim community and provide spiritual guidance to NYPD's Muslim officers, also working with Staten Island's interfaith clergy to ensure that hate, violence, and prejudice have no place in our borough or city. Most recently, Imam Taher was recognized as one of our city's most influential faith leaders by city and state and their inaugural Faith Power 100, a truly deserved recognition. Imam Taher's contributions to the 49th District are immeasurable, and I am grateful that he was here to join us today. Again, I would like to thank Majority Leader Powers, and I know that I joined my Staten Island delegation in thanking Imam Taher Kuke for being here today, and I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanks, and thank you for being with us here today. Thanks so much. We're going to now have the adoption in minutes by Councilmember Vicky Palladino.
I move that the minutes of the stated meeting of November 3rd, 2022 be adopted as printed.
Thank you. We'll now have messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
None.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Thank you. We'll now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I hope that you had a good Thanksgiving and a great start to the holiday season with your families and loved ones. Over the past several months, our city has been working to accommodate and support tens of thousands of people seeking asylum from their home countries. New York City has welcomed our newest arrivals with open arms, and it is critical that they, like all New Yorkers, continue to be treated with dignity, decency, and compassion. Coordinating services across different city agencies to meet the needs of those seeking asylum has not been easy. We must recognize the hard work of our city and nonprofit workers who provide critical support and resources. Just this past weekend, I joined Councilmember Shaker Krishnan and our partners at the New York Immigration Coalition for a key to the city family resource fair to provide basic necessities for families seeking asylum. The council is also hosting a holiday drive for asylum seekers from now until December 22nd here at City Hall and across the street at 250 Broadway to collect new clothes and coats, school supplies, baby formula, diapers, and other essentials. It is clear that gaps in services remain, and it will require policy improvements and an all-hands-on-deck effort to ensure that they and our communities get the help needed. On Monday, December 19th, and Tuesday, December 20th, we will be holding a two-day hearing to examine the city's response and delivery of services to migrants who have arrived in New York. chaired by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala and myself, the committee of the whole will hear from key city agencies, including the mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, New York City Health and Hospitals, Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, Department of Social Services, Department of Youth and Community Development, and the Department of Education. The following day will be dedicated solely to public testimony. I look forward to this important two-day hearing, our third on this crisis alone, as we work together to support individuals and families seeking asylum and everyone across our city. Friday, December 2nd, was a special education day, which commemorates the signing of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act into law in 1975. It is critical that we provide our most vulnerable students with the effective and sustained services they need to succeed. Nearly five decades after the passage of this crucial law, we remain focused and committed to supporting all students with disabilities. This week is National Influenza Vaccination Week, which serves as a reminder to everyone that it's not too late to get your flu shot. Winter is on the way, and we are already experiencing cold temperatures over the past few weeks. The temperatures are going up and down, and it's important that we protect ourselves and our loved ones this flu season. Make an appointment now, and some places you don't even have to make an appointment, but if you want to, you make your appointment now at vaccinefinder.nyc.gov. Now let's move on into our stated agenda. Today, we're voting on several legislative rules, finance, and land use items. First, we will vote on the following appointments. David Fullard, a Commissioner of the New York City Local Conditional Release Commission. Gregorio Myers, a Commissioner of the New York City Local Conditional Release Commission. Lili Shapiro, a Commissioner of the New York City Local Conditional Release Commission. Next, we will vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon authorizes an Article 11 tax exemption for one building in Yorkville. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon authorizes an Article 11 tax exemption for three buildings in Corona. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon authorizes an Article 11 tax exemption for two buildings in Briarwood. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon amends a previous exemption for one building in Harlem. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon amends a previous exemption for two buildings in Harlem. We will also be voting on the following land use items. Livonia 4, a Department of Housing Preservation and Development application that will facilitate the development of affordable, senior, and supportive housing in the Brownsville neighborhood of Brooklyn and Councilmember Barron's district. This project will build a total of 499 units on four parcels of city-owned land. The four buildings will include two affordable housing developments, a senior housing development, and a supportive housing development targeted for young adults at risk of homelessness and youth aging out of foster care, with onsite services and amenities at each of the buildings. The council is modifying the application to strike MIH Option 2 and add the deep affordability option. 280 Bergen Street rezoning, a rezoning application to facilitate the construction of 300 units of housing, included 75 affordable units under MIH Option 1 alongside commercial and community facility space in the Borum Hill neighborhood of Brooklyn in Councilmember Wrestler's district. The rezoning also includes two city-owned parking lots, where HPD has committed to developing up to 150 units of affordable housing. The council is modifying the application to strike MIH Option 2 and add the deep affordability option. And finally, we will be voting on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution 258B, sponsored by Councilmember James Gennaro, calls on the governor to ensure that funds from the Clean Water, Clean Air, and Green Jobs Environmental Bond Act 2022, which was approved by New Yorkers in November of 2022, and authorizes the issuance of $4.2 billion in funds in bonds to finance critical environmental restoration and resiliency projects across the state are allocated to New York City in a manner that reflects the city's contributions to statewide tax revenue. Resolution 169, sponsored by Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler, calls on the Climate Action Council to draft and the governor to implement a final climate action scoping plan that commits to meeting the targets mandated in the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. The CLCPA, signed into law in 2019, calls for an 85% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2050, with interim targets of 40% reduction by 2030, 100% zero emissions electricity by 2040, and 70% renewable energy by 2030, among other mandates. The Climate Action Council is tasked with developing the scoping plan. We want to say thank you to staff Ricky Chala. Resolution 292A, sponsored by Council Majority Whip Silvina Brooks Powers, calls on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign S.5320, A.9731, which would amend the administrative code of the City of New York to allow commuter vans to accept hails from prospective passengers in the street, and would repeal certain related provisions in New York City law, such as the existing penalty for accepting a street hail. Thank you to our staff members Kevin Kautowski and Elliot Lynn. Introduction 76A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, would require the Department of Environmental Protection to establish a financial assistance program to reduce the cost of purchasing and installing backwater valves. This bill would also require DEP, in consultation with other designated agencies or offices, to complete a study that evaluates where the backwater valve should be installed to mitigate damage caused by backflow. The study would be posted on the DEP website and submitted to the mayor and city council. The financial assistance program would be informed by the findings of the study and subject to appropriation. The bill would also require DEP to prioritize neighborhoods regularly affected by backflow events and conduct outreach and education to property owners about the benefits of backwater valves. We thank you to our staff member Jessica Steinberg Alpin. Next, introduction 759B, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, would require the New York City Police Department to establish a program to distribute kits used to etch identifying numbers into catalytic converters for the purpose of deterring and investigating their theft. It would also require the NYPD to educate the public about the benefits of etching and their etching kit program. We thank you, staff member Josh Kingsley. Next, we will vote on a civil service legislative package. Introduction 658, sponsored by our Civil Service and Labor Committee Chair, Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa, requires the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to establish a civil service ambassador program that will provide presentations and educational materials to high schools, universities, juvenile justice facilities, foster care programs, and other populations that would benefit from joining the civil service and the process of taking civil service examinations. Resolution 310A, also sponsored by Councilmember De La Rosa, calls on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign S.3062C and A.7503, raising the minimum wage annually by a percentage based on the rate of inflation. Thank you to staff members Nick Connell and Elizabeth Arts. Introduction 698A, sponsored by our Governmental Operations Committee Chair, Councilmember Sandra Ung, would require the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, or DCAST, to operate a public service corps program that offers internships at various city agencies. In addition, the bill would require DCAST to make efforts to recruit a diverse pool of students for the program and report annually on its efforts. And finally, introduction 696, also sponsored by Councilmember Ung, would amend certain provisions of the city charter related to the design and contents of ranked choice voting or RCV ballots. The goal of this legislation is to make RCV ballots easier to read, particularly for voters with lower literacy levels, low vision, or do not speak English as their primary language. The bill would also improve the layout of RCV ballots by adding new design requirements. Thank you to staff members CJ Murray and Erica Cohen. Thank you for your attention, and I turn it back into the hands of our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We're now moving to discussion of general orders, but before I do that, I just want to mention and acknowledge and say a very happy birthday to our speaker, whose her birthday is going to be on Friday. You didn't think I knew that, did you?
Happy birthday.
Very happy birthday, and I hope it's a relaxing one, which I know is a lot to ask for, but happy birthday. We're now going to move into general order, and we will start with Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember Wrestler.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, and my fellow council members. Proud to introduce intro 759B, which we will be voting on today. Across our city, we've experienced an exponential rise in catalytic converter thefts, with these thefts quadrupling over the past year, and thieves are known to target parking lots, auto repair shops, residential driveways, and anywhere cars are parked to remove a catalytic converter. These thefts leave residents with thousands of dollars in repair costs for their vehicles and a loss of peace of mind in their communities. The metals found in a catalytic converter are worth thousands of dollars on the black market, and today, the New York City Council will curtail this illegal activity and give New Yorkers as much needed measure of protection. This bill would invest and expand on the good but overstretched work of the NYPD, which has already been actively engaged in combating the rising trend of catalytic converter thefts. I want to thank council committee staff, my colleagues in the Committee on Public Safety, including Chair Hanks and Speaker Adrian Adams, for bringing this legislation to the floor in an effort to protect our residents, and hopefully this bill, along with the last stated with Councilmember Brewer's bill, will help at least to alleviate a bit this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. We'll now go to Councilmember Wrestler.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. I just wanted to share briefly a little bit about the rezoning we're voting on today at 280 Bergen Street in Borum Hill. This is the last industrial block of a brownstone neighborhood, and it is the first rezoning that was certified during, in Council District 33 during this year, and I couldn't be happier with the outcome. I really want to thank the community leaders who partnered with us and met every other week for a period of months with the developer, our Nitro Ten Association presidents and Civic Association leaders, community board representatives, community-based organization leaders. We had a group of eight or nine folks who met consistently with the developer in my office to get us to a much better outcome on this project. This will generate 450 units of housing in Borum Hill, and fully half, 225 of those units, are going to be affordable. And when I say affordable, the significant majority of those units are affordable to a family of three making $72,000, really affordable housing. And we were able to do it because we're converting two parking lots that the city actually owned, but the developer controlled for 40 years, into 100% affordable housing. We are also not building one single new parking spot on this development. So, in the most transit-rich part of Brooklyn, we are building 450 units of housing with zero parking. In fact, we're moving two parking lots. And then lastly, as part of the Gowanus Neighborhood rezoning that the council passed last year, the supermarket that serves the three Nitro developments in our community is unfortunately going to be redeveloped, and we got this developer to commit, in a community benefits agreement, to building a brand-new, truly affordable supermarket that will continue to ensure that low and moderate income residents in our community can afford access to quality food. This is the kind of rezoning that I'm really proud to support, expanding housing supply, but expanding housing supply for the people who need it most, working-class families in our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you, my colleagues. I rise. Another 100% affordable. Thank you, thank you. This one is especially important because I'm partnering with my neighbor in Councilmember Darlene Mealy. So, I want to thank Darlene Mealy so much for the Brownsville part. We work it together. And this, the special thing about this is youth coming out of foster home, ages 18 to 24, will have an apartment, an affordable apartment, set aside for those youth. And of course, we have the seniors with the vouchers and for the homeless. This is, once again, 100% affordable. We've worked hard over the years. There were some issues with some of the landowners the homeowners had. We resolved that with Community Board 16. So, once again, a 100% affordable project, and I want to thank the council for the support.
Thank you, and we'll now go to Councilwoman De La Rosa.
Thank you. I want to thank Madam Speaker for her support and our colleagues. Today, we will be voting on intro 658. The Civil Service and Labor Committee has been working for a few months on the civil service exam, and today, we will be voting on intro 658. As we know, we're facing significant staffing shortages in the municipal workforce with vacancy rates almost at an 8%, and entry and promotion within 80% of city government positions are subject to the passage of civil service examinations. Introduction 658 would require the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to establish and provide education and outreach citywide through the city programs to populations that can benefit from joining civil service and participate in the examination process. This introduction calls on also members that are part of the civil service workforce to learn about promotions and opportunities that exist to them through the ambassador program. So, I ask for your support today as we consider this introduction. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for general orders? Seeing none, we'll move to the report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, intro 658A, Civil Service Ambassador Program. amended and coupled on general orders. Report of the Committee on Finance, pre-considered LU 149 and Reso 425 through pre-considered LU 153 and Reso 429, property tax exemptions. Coupled on general orders. Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, intro 696, ranked choice elections. Coupled on general orders. Intro 698A, Public Service Corps. Amended and coupled on general orders. Report of the Committee on Public Safety, intro 759B, catalytic converters. Amended and coupled on general orders. Report of the Committee on Resiliency and Waterfronts, intro 76A, backwater valves. Amended and coupled on general orders. Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, M95 and Reso 430, approving the appointment of Gregorio Myers, Local Conditional Release Commission, LCRC. Coupled on general orders. M96 and Reso 431, approving the appointment of David Fuller, LCRC. Coupled on general orders. M97 and Reso 432, approving the appointment of Lily Shapiro, LCRC. Coupled on general orders. On the general orders calendar, LU 135 and Reso 433 through LU 138 and Reso 436, Livonia 4. Coupled on general orders. Coupled on general orders.
LU 143 and reso 437 and LU 144 and reso 438, 280 Bergen Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
Resolution appointing various persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Dinowitz.
Yes.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Abreu.
Congrats, Carmen, aye on all.
Ariola.
Aye on all, except for M95, M96, and M97, for which I am a no.
Aviles.
Aye on all, except for M96 and 431, for which I abstain.
Aye on all.
Barron.
I abstain from the David appointment, David Fuller appointment, and I vote aye on Gregorio I vote aye on those two. Abstain from the second one, and abstain from the Bergen Street project, and aye on all the rest.
Thank you.
Aye on all.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
I vote aye on all, except for M96 and the corresponding reso, to which I abstain.
Carr.
I vote no on M95, M96, and M97, with accompanying resolutions 430, 431, and 432, and aye on the rest.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M96, with accompanying resolution 431, for which I abstain.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye on all.
Holden.
Aye on all, except M95, M96, M97, for which I vote no.
Hudson.
Aye on all, with the exception of M95, M96, M97, and their accompanying resolutions, for which I abstain.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan.
Aye on all, except of M95, M96, M97, reso 258B, reso 169.
Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Marte.
I vote aye.
Mealy.
I abstain on M96 and 97, and aye on all.
Thank you.
Aye on all.
Menon.
Sorry, aye on all.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Nurse.
I vote aye on all.
Ose.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M95, M96, M97, in which I abstain, as well as accompanied by their resolutions.
Palladino.
Aye on all, except for M95, M96, M97, of which I am a no.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye on all, with the exception of M95, M96, and M97, and their accompanying resolutions 430, 431, and 432, for which I abstain.
Richardson, Jordan.
Aye on all.
Riley.
I don't know.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M96, which I abstain.
Thank you, Councilman. Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Velazquez.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye on all, except no on M95, M96, and M97, with accompanying resolutions 430, 431, and 432.
Thank you.
I vote aye on all.
Juan.
I vote aye on all, and I abstain from M95, M96, and M97, and the accompanying resolutions 430, 431, and 432. Abstain.
Thank you, Councilman. Jaeger.
Aye on all, with the exception of M95, M96, M97, and accompanying resolutions 430, 431, and 432.
Thank you. Borelli.
I was just asked by a reporter about partisanship in the council, and yet, here we are, where the Progressive Caucus and the Republican Caucus have end-arrounded to the same conclusion. Aye on all, except M95, M96, M97, and accompanying resolutions 430, 431, and 432.
Thank you. Powers.
Aye on all.
Speaker Adams. All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, with the exclusion of M95 and resolution 430, adopted by a vote of 38 in the affirmative, 8 in the negative for abstentions, M96 and resolution 431, 32 in the affirmative, 8 negative 10 abstentions, M97, a resolution 432, adopted by a vote of 37 in the affirmative, 8 negative 5 abstentions. We'll now move to introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Hold on one second. Actually, we'll move into the discussion of resolutions while we wait for the final tally. We have first Councilmember Brooks Powers signed up.
Thank you. I'd like to speak in support of a resolution I'm sponsoring today, resolution 292A, which would allow commuter vans to accept street hails. Some of New York's 51 council districts are transit-rich. Within a few blocks of this building, we could catch trains or nearly a dozen subway lines, but other districts like mine are transit deserts. District 31 is one of the largest by land area, but it contains just a single subway line, the A train. In districts like mine, New Yorkers have long relied on commuter vans or dollar vans. These vans are a transportation lifeline for communities, communities of color, especially that lack access to core transit infrastructure. Under the state law, TLC-licensed commuter vans are not currently authorized to accept street hails. The only way community members are legally permitted to use these vans is to pre-arrange travel beforehand. This limits the assistance commuter vans can provide to communities. We need flexibility and affordability in transit. New Yorkers everywhere should have cheap, reliable options to allow them to get to work. I ask that this body vote yes on resolution 292A, and to join me and support equity in transportation across New York City. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Gennaro.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I just want to speak briefly on reso 258B. That's about the fair share for the bond act monies. That's $4.2 billion, and New York City, if the pass is to be our guide, will not get its fair share of bond act monies. That's what happened with the 1996 Bond Act. It's the state DEC that makes these decisions recently, for example. And it's not just bond act money, it's all kinds of funding for, there was $220 million in a state program, and they made the decision that no city could get more than $5 million out of the 220, and New York City got $2 million out of that, 1%, which is not fair. So, this is kind of like, and I also served for six years as a deputy commissioner at the DEC for 2014 to 2020, so I see how unfair it can get. We have to demand that we get our fair share, not only from bond act monies, but from all the allocations that we are short chains on. So, thank you very much, Mr. Leader.
Thank you, Councilmember Gennaro. We're going, we'll now have a voice vote on today's, just one second. Okay. We'll now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais before the vote. I'll now read the resolutions into the record. Resolution 169 calls on the Climate Action Council to draft and the governor to implement a final Climate Action Council scoping plan that commits to meeting CLCPA targets and bold climate and environmental justice action in New York. Will all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And the abstentions, ayes have it. Resolution 258B calls on the governor to ensure the appropriations of funds from the Clean Water, Clean Air, and Green Jobs Environmental Bond Act of 2022 are allocated to New York City in a manner that is commensurate with the city's contribution to statewide tax revenue. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And the abstentions, the ayes have it. Resolution 292A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the New York State Governor to sign Senate Bill 5320 and Assembly Bill 9731, which would amend the Administrative Code of the City of New York to allow commuter vans to accept hails from prospective passengers in the street, and would repeal certain provisions of law relating thereto. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Any abstentions, the ayes have it. Resolution 310A calls on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign Senate Bill Number 3062D and Assembly Bill Number 7503, which raises the minimum wage annually by percentage based on the rate of inflation and labor productivity. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And the abstentions, the ayes have it. We'll now move into today's general discussion. We will start with Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing reso 415. It's a resolution calling on the United States Congress to pass and the president to sign the September 11th Day of Remembrance Act. The impetus for this resolution was because of an email my office received earlier this year from a set of twins, Anthony and Alexa Gennaro, who lost their uncle and never met their uncle, but they lost him in the September 11th attacks on the World Trade Center. Despite never having had the opportunity to meet their uncle in person, Anthony and Alexa felt an attachment to the lost relative, thanks to the 9/11 curriculum at the school they attend in Bell Harbor, the St. Francis de Sales Catholic Academy. In class, they learned about the attacks, and their teachers took time to honor the victims and keeping, and their families. This letter led me to further realize the importance of keeping the memory of that tragic day alive, so that our future generations will never, will live up to the pledge that we made 21 years ago to never forget all those taken from us that day. Barack Obama made September 11th a day of remembrance, when in 2016, he proclaimed it to be Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. I propose that we take that next step towards truly honoring the lost and make September 11th a full-fledged federal holiday. As our new generations get older and the memories of that day get lost, it is only through a federal holiday that we can truly ensure that we live up to the promise to the fallen more than two decades ago and guarantee that their memories will live on in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ariola. We're going to go to Councilmember Riley next. Before we do that, I just want to read the land use vote. Land use items 143 and 144 and accompanying resolutions were adopted today by a vote of 49 in the affirmative and one abstention. We'll now go to Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I introduce three pieces of legislation, intro 850, in the interest of enhancing the sanitation of our community. Intro 850 will concretely assign the jurisdiction of city agencies to sustain regular cleaning and maintenance of certain city properties, with, for history, some areas like center malls, safety zones, underpass and overpass being overlooked and neglected. This piece of legislation provides means for clarity, transparency, and accountability for cleaning New York City. Intro 849 to encourage this discernibility of the New York City bus lane restrictions. This will require the DOT to post signings indicating the hours and days that bus lane restrictions are in effect. Taking further steps to publish and update this information on the DOT website will increase our city's ability to provide more access and knowledge to do the right thing in regards to navigating bus lanes. And lastly, intro 848, this mission of correcting shortcomings with our foster care system. This will require the ACS to conduct quarterly random audits and reports on foster care placement notices. This piece of legislation provides transparency to indicate these notices are being delivered in a timely and sufficient manner. Intro 848 takes actions detailing when there is a failure to provide notice, if legally required information is missing, and also includes but is not limited to reporting on quantified instances where notices were required but not sent. I appreciate if all my colleagues look into this bill and sign on, and thank you for this opportunity, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. We'll now go to Councilmember Borelli.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and happy December to you. Today, I'm introducing a resolution on my favorite topic, the eminent congestion pricing plan that the MTA is destined to bestow upon us, us happy acceptee drivers who will pay this charge. While the MTA was releasing their environmental assessment, our neighbors across the pond in London were given the opportunity by Transport for London, their version of the MTA, to weigh in on whether their congestion pricing plan, which
in on whether their congestion pricing plan, which has been in existence for over 20 years, they were given the opportunity to weigh in in a public referendum on whether they wanted to expand their congestion charge from a tiny central business district to a broader part of Greater London. 66% of Londoners voted no. 66%, 2/3 of Londoners said that their congestion plan is not benefiting the people of London, and the advertised benefits have not materialized as they were promised. And so 2/3 of them voted against it. This is the same plan where advocates here are telling us has worked tremendously well, incredibly successful. So I'm asking through resolution that we call on the governor to put the congestion charge as a referendum item on next year's ballot so that we can ask our constituents who now have access to a study, the MTA's own study, their own environmental assessment, which says starkly and shockingly that there aren't that many benefits to congestion pricing. So we should ask our constituents whether they want to have this tax that once implemented will never go away. So I'll ask you all to sign on to my resolution and give the vote to implement this congestion charge to our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping, please. We're next, they're going to go to Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you. Today, I'm introducing several important bills I want to briefly discuss. First is Intro 835, which will require the Comptroller to conduct annual audits of MWBE procurement, ensuring diverse businesses have equitable access to contracting opportunity, strengthen communities, and extends economic opportunity across the city. This bill would help hold the city accountable and ensure agencies engage and utilize diverse businesses. Second is Intro 836, which would place a cap on the color temperature of new street lights. Experts say limiting color temperature of street lights is good for our eyes, for our sleep, and for the overall health of our community. Third is Intro 834, which would create a down tree task force to assist in safe clearing and removal of trees and tree limbs that have fallen due to severe weather. New York's communities know how damaging storms can be and how important it is for the city to respond quickly to clear the streets and allow for safe movement once again. And finally, I'm introducing Intro 833, which would require the city to look at on how rezonings have impacted transportation across the city. I've talked a lot about transportation equity during my time as a council member, examining how land use actions have impacted transportation in the past will help us plan better for the future. I look forward to working with my colleagues on these bills moving forward, and I ask that all members interested to please sign on. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from Councilmember Schillman, followed by Councilwoman Menon.
I'd like to switch, because it's Councilmember Menon's bill, so let her go first. I'm speaking in support of it.
We'll now hear from Councilmember Menon, followed by Councilwoman Schillman.
Thank you so much. So today, I'm really proud to introduce the Healthcare Accountability and Consumer Protection Act alongside Councilmembers Schillman, Narcisse, Sabreu, Brannon, De La Rosa, Stevens, Botcher, Viles, Ang, Williams, Sanchez, Krishnan, Dinowitz, Hanks, Ariola, Velazquez, and both the Manhattan and Brooklyn Borough Presidents to empower consumers with transparent price information on healthcare prices. This is going to actually create the nation's first ever healthcare accountability office. And specifically, what the bill does, Intro 844, is it would mandate that the city publish a price of every single medical procedure that is happening in New York City hospitals. It also would give the city the ability to audit healthcare expenses. It would grade hospitals on compliance with this transparency measure. It would also release data on the hundreds of millions of dollars that these not-for-profit hospitals are receiving in tax incentives and the amount that's going to charitable care. This is such an important issue. If you're a woman giving birth in New York City, you could be paying $55,000 for a C-section at Montefiore, or $20,000 at another hospital, or $17,000 at an H&amp;H hospital. If you need a routine colonoscopy in New York City, you could be paying $10,000 at one hospital or $2,000 at another hospital. I honestly can't think of another industry where, as a consumer, you get zero information on what you are about to be charged. And we know that consumer medical debt is one of the highest pieces of debt that many families have across New York City. The other advantage of this bill is it will allow us to save money. Currently, the city of New York is spending $9.5 billion a year, almost 10% of our city's budget, on employee healthcare costs, and that has risen exponentially in recent years. It's estimated that we could save $2 billion if we brought prices down, and so I'm urging my colleagues to please sign on to Intro 844. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from Councilmember Schillman, followed by Councilwoman Palladino.
Thank you. I want to speak in support of Intro 844. Healthcare is a human right, but not when you cannot afford it. For too long, hospitals have overcharged patients with inconsistent rates, causing New Yorkers to fall into crippling medical debt. We cannot let this continue. We are on the cusp of the worst global health crisis of our lifetime, which means more people than ever must rely on our broken healthcare system. New Yorkers deserve accountability. We deserve action. We deserve transparency. As a recent breast cancer survivor and someone who has devoted my personal and professional life to healthcare advocacy, I am very proud to be a co-prime sponsor of this legislation that is being introduced today by my colleague Julie Menon, whose healthcare regulatory background formed the basis of this important legislation. This bill will finally bring the transparency and accountability to hospital costs that all of us deserve. I also want to say that this kind of legislation doesn't happen in a vacuum and requires the support of the Speaker of this body, and I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams for her support and her leadership on this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Palladino, followed by Councilwoman Barron.
Good afternoon, everybody. Today, I'm introducing Resolution 422, calling upon the state legislature to mandate vocational education in our public high schools. Blue collar workers are the backbone of our city. They keep our subways running, they keep our streets clean, they keep our phones on, and our networks humming. They repair our bridges and our roadways. They build our bridges. They are the ones we count on when anything goes wrong. Yet, we are failing our city and our young people by not doing nearly enough to ensure we have a future population equipped to fully inherit our city, because our schools are doing almost nothing to train the next generation in these crucial skills. Never before has a college diploma cost so much and delivered so little return on its investment. Our students deserve to know that there are lucrative, important, and fulfilling career opportunities available to them in which, though they do not require a traditional academic path, and the crippling financial commitments that accompany them. Career and technical education programs provide young people an invaluable option when making their post-secondary education decisions, and we owe it to them to give them that option. Millions of New Yorkers, including myself, have built a comfortable life for our families through honest, blue-collar work, and that proud tradition must be passed on to our next generation. This is not a partisan issue. This is about giving our kids every possible opportunity to achieve success and giving our city the workforce it needs for the future. I hope this council can come together and let our colleagues in Albany know how important this issue is. Thank you very much, everybody, and you all know how I feel about the young people and the future of this city, and they are the heartbeat, and we need to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilwoman Barron, followed by Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, my colleagues. I want to invite all of you tomorrow. We're having a special visit from His Excellency, the Ambassador to Cuba at the Permanent Mission and United Nations Ambassador, Yuri Gonzalez. So he'll be with us tomorrow, 12 noon, in the library conference room at 250 Broadway, and all of you are welcome to come. I want to thank Chio Se, the council member, for the appropriate committee for our resolution on Cuba, for having a hearing on that tomorrow. And this is simply doing something that should have been done a long time ago, lifting the embargo and allow travel to Cuba. For you who listen to the different propaganda about Cuba and socialism, we should keep our minds open. Fidel Castro and Ernesto Che Guevara, they were leaders in the world in providing technical assistance to countries in Africa. There wouldn't be no Angola without Cuban support. Countries in the Caribbean, Maurice Bishop and Grenada, Cuba provided technical assistance for them as well. Countries in Latin America, Cuba, even though they were embargoled by the United States, provided technical assistance, doctors, technicians, engineers to these developing countries. And to my surprise, when I did visit Cuba, and I went to their International Medical School, by the way, one of the best in the world, and hate to make you jealous, but healthcare is free in Cuba, and so is education. But when I went there, I was surprised that two students said, you know, hey, Councilwoman Barron, how are you? It was two students from East New York, and I didn't even know that they were there that were receiving free medical education from Cuba. And also Castro said, we will give you support for Katrina victims that our government neglected and allowed to die on the roofs in New Orleans. So I want to thank Chio Se for the hearing, and also invite all of you to greet the ambassador tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll now hear from Councilwoman Sanchez, followed by Councilwoman Vilas.
Good afternoon. I simply wanted to take a moment to thank our sergeants who work at the council. I had a hearing yesterday on code enforcement, and I was, had a baby in one arm and sort of a million bags and things, on the other hand, and I got to test all of City Hall's accessibility features. And Madam Speaker, I just want to thank you, and I want to thank the sergeants for being so accommodating as you are to folks who visit City Hall every day. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to our sergeants as well. We'll now go to Councilmember Vilas, followed by Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Majority Leader. It's not a surprise to most of you that this holiday season, families across our city are struggling. During a time of a year marked by the rewards of giving, families are facing record-high inflation, record-high housing costs, rising healthcare costs, stagnant wages. All the while, corporations rake in record levels of profit. It's not a coincidence, and it's a pattern we've seen repeated again and again, leading us to record-high inequality. As we are all aware of this pattern, repeated ad nauseam for the past four decades or more, it won't come as a surprise for you to learn that our federal government is also considering a proposal that would provide tax relief to corporations of approximately $120 billion over a 10-year period. And it also won't come as a surprise that our working-class families see no such sign of relief in the near future, and instead are preparing for real impacts of economic downturn. We must finally say enough. We must shift our focus to implementing proven strategies that uplift our working-class families and thereby uplift our economy. That's why today I'm introducing Resolution 417, along with Councilmember De La Rosa, which calls on the federal government to extend and make permanent the child tax credit, which provided relief to millions of families last year. With the worsening economic outlook, the expiration of these benefits has put nearly 10 million children at risk of poverty, and with the familiar pattern of the majority of those children being black and brown. We know what happens when we prioritize corporate profits over the working class. With a crisis looming, let's finally change this pattern. Let's finally do the right thing. I encourage you all to sign on to Resolution 417. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Wong, followed by Councilmember Farias.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'd like to call my colleagues to support two pieces of legislation that I'm introducing today, which is Intro 851 and Intro 852. Since 2019 and 2020 school year, our city's public schools have lost more than 100,000 students, about 10% of our total enrollment. This is a larger decline than larger cities like Chicago or Los Angeles. And Intro 851 would require DOE to report on students' disenrollment from public schools, and this data would be broken down by school district, age, grade level, race, and ethnicity, as well as information regarding where students are transferring to, so that we have a tracking system of where the students are. Because in my school, in my school district alone, I know that we've lost hundreds of students, and we want to know where they are, to make sure that they are safe, and that we are doing everything we can to plan for the long term, especially when it comes to individualized school funding and with the current fair student funding formula that we have today. So this report would increase the granularity of this enrollment data while protecting student privacy. So I really assure you to sign on to that. And for 852, we have over half a million New Yorkers estimated to still not have internet access. We know today with the current deal with DO-IT, as well as the new CTO, that we have programs like the Big Apple Connect, as well as Affordable Connectivity Program. And what Intro 852 would do would require DO-IT to create and distribute information on discounted internet services and community-based internet service providers to local community groups, so that people are, this basically a awareness campaign. So I really assure, I really call you to all sign on, and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. We now hear from Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Councilwoman Kagan.
Hi, thank you. What I have to say about it is if healthcare is not affordable to all New Yorkers, our system is failing. Something is critically wrong when patients are fighting for their lives and hospitals are fighting for their lives. As a registered nurse, I have seen it firsthand. It saddens me that hospitals, who should be looking out for the best interests of the communities they serve, far too often look at the turning, at turning a profit. New Yorkers should not have to shop around at hospitals as if they are looking for a Black Friday sale on a C-sections or heart surgeries. It's not funny, but that's how it looks to me as a nurse. Healthcare providers have an obligation to the people they serve, and elected officials have an obligation to ensure that the system works for the people, not for them, and not against them, which is why I am proud to support the Healthcare Accountability and Consumer Protection Act. And I have to say thank you to my colleagues, Menon, that work so hard, and Lynn, talking about the importance of having healthcare accessible to all. And also, I would like, I'm looking forward to working with council to introduce legislation that would bring more transparency around staffing ratios and working condition in our healthcare system. We have to provide the best quality healthcare in New York City. If anywhere else, we have to, we have to lead by example. So I thank you, and I count on my colleagues to make sure that everyone have access to best quality healthcare in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have from Councilwoman Kagan.
Thank you. Good afternoon. First of all, I would like to welcome back all my colleagues who visited Israel and enjoyed their great time at the Holy Land. As you probably know, this week I became a proud member of Republican Conference. And though there were many reasons of my decision, the main point is I became very dissatisfied with the way public safety is treated in New York City. I became sick and tired of this soft on crime and tough on police policies. We need to take public safety seriously to support our law enforcement and to prioritize rights of law-abiding citizens over rights of criminals. I intend to work closely with my Democratic and Republican colleagues to improve quality of life for communities in South and Brooklyn and across New York City. Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else signed up for speak? Okay. Thank you. We'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's meeting.
Thank you. The stated meeting of December 7, 2022 is hereby adjourned.